Mr. Butcher will lead us in the place.
Stand please, out ahead. Praise to God we come again as the service of this city to transact business of the city. Lord has become, we ask our blessings upon this meeting. We pray, Lord, that our decisions today will be pleasing at our sight. We pray, Lord, that the meeting will be conducted with peace and order and that, once we've finished here, Lord, that we can leave knowing that we've done the best and that what we have done will be beneficial to the citizens of this city. It is in these blessings that we ask, amen. Go face the flag and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, Colorado.
Councilor Bradford.
President.
Councilwoman Fordham.
President.
Councilwoman Nicholson.
President.
Councilwoman Woodson.
Here.
Councilwoman Florida.
Here.
Councilwoman Green.
Here.
Councilwoman Bowles.
Here. Tomorrow, entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the administrative conference on May twenty-fourth and the meeting on May twenty-eighth. Does any council member have any awards, recognitions, or distinguished guests at this time?
Well, I'd like to counsel know I came in second on the five K race, right behind Councilman Bradford. Next year, I'm challenging Lord Thompson, Paul Max, to get first.
All right. Any other council member? Saying, now, Mayor Perkins, do you have any awards or distinguished guests at this time, sir?
I do not, Chairman.
All right. Mr. Green, property standards here? Anyone have anything relative to property standards?
Since we had a, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. Mr. Green, since the weather has seen a trial of a little bit of making progress from some of these...
We're cutting all over, like crazy, so...
I didn't send a man, but I mentioned at the previous meeting regarding debris on a lot about thoroughfares, like that being addressed.
The debris on the thoroughfares? Um, you'd have to be a little bit more specific with me, but if you can kind of give me an idea of what you're talking about, I can...
Let me just, let me just email you some streets.
Right.
And some blocks.
That'll work.
But I mean, throughout the city, I'm seeing either people are evicting people, putting their debris on the side. I'm seeing, and I know the order for the nutter, nutter boom truck has to be put in. But I'm seeing a lot of that also where the nutter boom truck needs to be, need to be touring the area and getting, getting some trash off the streets. But I've seen the Pacific streets that I was referring to.
Okay. That'll help.
I think that's it. Thank you, Mr. Green. Ms. Jones sent us our, she already sent out the revenue plan, right?
Yep, sent it to us Tuesday last week.
All right. And the city attorney as well.
Yes, there haven't been any changes, but I can confirm that via email.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Jones, will that be in the legislation air tomorrow?
None were aware of.
All right. And we have the following request to speak.
Mr. Marvin Muhammad.
Marvin Muhammad, twenty-eight zero eight, Herschel D. Wilson, to the council administration. I want to thank City Councilman Chair Bowman for a conversation that we had this weekend on the very topic that I want to speak on, which is the public comments ordinance that, that the city councilman from, from District C altered and sponsored to revise and amend. As I said in the article that we was quoted in just this past weekend, I said that this podium is an opportunity for this council to, to gauge the polls of the citizens of the, of the city of Shreveport. I also said that this governmental body has become very restrictive. I said also that this governmental body has, has, while they point fingers at the administration about the lack of transparency, but yet don't want to, to even engage what I would recall lawful deliberative dialogue. It's literally our way or no way. That, I believe, when the citizens, and I say this humbly, when the citizens' teardrops get lost in a calamity, a calamity of, of, of a rainstorm, it becomes an issue. It's almost as if the, the council believes that the citizens serves them versus that the, that the council is actually representing the people. I was hoping that some councilperson would be bold enough or courageous enough or brave enough to actually add an amendment to this because, and I, and I also want to commend Councilman Green because he sought to, to guide the council a couple of weeks ago about the council being willing to lend an ear about the sensibilities of, of black Americans in Shreveport. And it was cast off, you know, by another council member. And I, and I can't recall who did it, but they basically said, well, who, who is to say? What is sensible? You know, what, what is sensitive to anyone? And what has to be, what, what has to be understood is that black people have a very unique experience in America. So, we are different. We're going to have sensibilities that is different from the everyday American that, that came in and grew, and, and grew up, and grew up here. It's very vastly different. And, and I believe this council has shut its door and its ear and its heart on that. So, I won't take up the full three minutes, but I'm hoping that in the future that we can move forward. Thank you.
Mr. John Saddle.
John Saddle, four Tillwood. I just wanted to give some good news. Two weeks ago, I was here and I pointed out to Gary Norman that a couple of street signs were down in my district, which is also your district. And I was happy to see this last week, they, they got corrected. Just occurred to me how many thousands of street signs we may have where they're knocked over or in a wreck or something like that. So, I don't see, thank you for following up on that. I see here today, it looks like you're going to have a PowerPoint on food trucks. These are so very ineffective for those of us in the audience, and I wonder how really effective they are for you because it's difficult to read them, we're flipping through them, et cetera. I really think that you ought to change your rules. If, if a government agency or anybody's going to have a PowerPoint, they ought to have some copies to hand out. And this is going to be on the food truck amendments, which came up two weeks ago. We had a member of the administration here giving detailed objections to it. I actually have a copy of everything he had, and I think this is just going to be a big waste of time today because I'm, I suspect or hope that this goes to a committee. But PowerPoints, I go to the commission meeting, council meetings, they're flashed up there. I, I wonder how much y'all can observe if you don't have the written copy. Audience members, we get lost unless there's handouts there. And I would really urge this food truck amendment to go to a committee. I've reviewed it, the ordinance as the new amendments, and I've reviewed the comments of Brandon Fayle, and they're very complex, and I don't think that it's going to be easy to resolve around this horseshoe. And on the issue of trash on the streets, I took a picture on Fairfield of what an eviction, and I sent it to many of you, that there's a way, I believe, to handle that, that, that one committee, that Poser City has a procedure that handles that. As a landlord, you can evict, put it on the curb, et cetera. I think it could tighten up your ordinance, and part of that would probably be to have an environmental court or property standards court like Monroe has. I've reviewed that ordinance. It appears to be very effective. I was the first chairman of the very first property standards board under Mayor Hammett, and so I became aware then of the challenges. And reality-wise, I think that the legal challenges with property standards ordinance are the same today as they were way back then. Thank you.
Mr. Billy Roy Wayne.
Billy Roy Wayne, six to one forty-four Farrington Court, Shreveport, Louisiana, seven eleven two nine. For the most part, it is expected that elected officials consider the well-being and the issues of concerns of the persons who elected them to office. Yet, there should be times when individual districts should take a backseat to the overall good of the city, parish, state, and well-being. While I have a great deal of respect for the councilpersons who are in favor of the sagging, repeal of the sagging ordinance, I do feel that the repeal of this ordinance, ordinance to whatever degree is a mistake. The subliminal messages sent by such a repeal gives the appearance of a city which values acceptability above accountability. Ordinances, regardless of their nature, should not be held captive to particular situations, emotions, nor current events. The measure of benefits gained by repealing this ordinance may pale in comparison to the overall social, economic, and educational damage which may be done to our young persons. We should consider such when we make our decisions. Thank you.
Ms. Judy Williams.
Judy Williams, eight thirty-six Anianta Street. I'd like to respectfully disagree with the gentleman who just spoke, and I'd like to speak in favor of repealing the saggy pants ordinance. I think it's obvious that this has been overwhelmingly used against young black men, particularly against young black juveniles. I think it's an issue of freedom of expression, which we're all guaranteed in the Constitution. I don't feel like we should be in the place of legislating dress codes. I think there are better uses for our public safety dollars. I wanted you particularly to hear from me as an elderly white woman, so thank you very much.
Ms. Danielle Richard.
Hi, I'm Danielle Richard, and I'm at, I live at two ninety-six Atlantic Avenue. And I'm here to speak about the saggy pants ordinance. I definitely am in favor of repealing it. I don't think the law is necessary. If there are certain decency standards that, that we need to stick by, that's one thing, but applying fines or different things to a certain fad or a certain trend is totally unnecessary. I can see where in the future we may choose to ban yoga pants or ties or any other random piece of clothing. That's really not the place of the city council at all. So, I'm very happy to see that this is coming up to be repealed, and, and I definitely support that.
Mr. Kenneth Crepp.
Kenneth Crepp, one fifty-seven Archer, seven eleven zero five. In forty-one years in Shreveport, this is my first speaking at a work session because I'm off today, and that's interesting. And I was one of two citizens who opposed saggy baggy pants in oh-seven. The other one is deceased. So, there are standards. I know y'all wouldn't allow to drop the pants and the shorts and show the privates, so there are standards, it's just a matter of what they are, but please repeal it. But I'm really here on number seventy of a resolution. I'm here to talk about maggy saggy infrastructure. Streets, drainage, roofs at rec centers, fire stations, the convention center. The Lindwood overpass is saggy. The Stoner overpass, Overline Avenue, is saggy. So, thank you all for moving forward and recommending the sixteen-member committee, similar to what Mayor Glover did. He was, he was clever. He did it twenty-ten as he was running for a second term, and the election wasn't until April second of eleven. And as a small suggestion, Casey, on the fact sheet, which was well-presented, I would have added one statement that the last actual successful bond election was April second of eleven. You don't have to say it was a hundred seventy-five million, but we did really well. We did sixty-two percent yes on Proposition One for water and sewer. Thank you, consent decree, and Uncle Sam and DOJ. And we did a little less well on parks, police, and fire. But let's consider doing that again as we move forward, Mr. Mayor and council. Park sometimes fails on its own, but it got a fifty-seven percent yes because it was carried by the public safety departments. And the third one was streets and drainage back then, and it got a sixty percent yes. So, they all passed, and it will likely pass again. The timing, we've got three months, we've got until September twenty-third after the committee meets throughout the city and the neighborhoods. And I trust there will be meetings in most, if not all, districts. And that would be the November sixteenth runoff, the gubernatorial runoff. There's, there's literally no time for October twelfth primary because it's due in four weeks in early July. Or we could fall back to the presidential primary next year on April fourth, the day before Palm Sunday. But I don't like those low turnout elections. I think if we can concentrate on getting it on the November sixteenth gubernatorial runoff, we can get some money. I don't know if we would actually appropriate the funds to the twenty-twenty budgets until the bonds are sold. That's something for Shurika to work on with the attorney, but certainly this is a big step. And I just regret that ordinance seventy gets so much play and resolution seventy gets so little because, as I said to Mr. Lester from this podium twelve years ago, someday some councilperson, turning out to be, is going to repeal that. Thank you.
Ms. John Glover.
Good evening, councilpersons, mayor. The last time I stood before you, I came with you with a suggestion, but maybe not a suggestion itself.
Ms. Glover, we all, we all know who you are. Would you say your name and your address, please?
Oh, and I do apologize. John Glover, eighty-one hundred Pines Road, apartment three G, Shreveport, Louisiana. I implore you all to remember to whom you represent, not only your districts, but the city as a whole. We have so many things on table for us to discuss, and those things have to be with all of us into consideration. One issue cannot, cannot bring about a difference, so much so that it divides the city, that issue sagging pants. Whether we think we have the right to legislate or not, the ordinance was put into place for a reason. It doesn't matter today why we want to give reason or justification or excuses for such. It was there, and undoubtedly, it was there for a reason. Now, you're asking or being asked to look at a repeal. But think about who you are representing across the scale, not black, not white, but all of us. And you do so in every and each issue that is brought before you for your consideration. We got to stop the division and the divisiveness because it renders nothing of worth. And our city is worth saving, and division and divisiveness will not save her. Thank you.
Mr. Cedric Murphy.
Okay, I was not expecting this. I thought I was going to speak tomorrow, trying to bring up PowerPoint. Mayor Perkins, Councilman Bowman, Councilman Nicholson, Councilman Bowles, and the rest of you guys. June is National Men's Self-Awareness Month, and I just wanted to share that information with you guys to talk to your neighborhood associations, and most men have, are refused to go to doctors. So, in this month, we're asking all men, black and white, we're asking all men to go to the doctor and get themselves checked. Secondly, June is also post-traumatic stress syndrome month, and that is a month that is raising awareness for the causes behind it, the conditions behind it, the things people go through. It's not just a military disease. Okay, I thought I heard something in the background. And last, we are having a memorial for Anthony Charles tomorrow at nine o'clock at the site where he died, and we're hoping that some of you guys, if you have time, you could stop by. And like I said, I didn't, wasn't prepared to speak today, but basically, that's all what I have to say. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Mr. Chairman, there are no further requests to speak.
All right. We have the following executive appointments to be considered tomorrow. Assistant City Attorney Courtney Harris, Assistant City Attorney Alonzo P. Jackson, Jr., and Metropolitan Planning Commission Windsor Andrews for a reappointment, and Shreveport Airport Authority, Mr. Grant Knuckles. I know, Mayor Perkins, if you had either of those here today that want to speak or that just want to need to see, see Mr. Andrews.
We have one, we have one present.
Anyone have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Jackson and Ms. Harris are both here and available for questioning.
And Mr. Windsor Andrews is here right here. So, yeah, Mr. Chairman, let's have him come before the body.
All right. Mr. Andrews, since you're up front, would you like to, to the podium, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and the mayor. Councilmembers, it's indeed an honor to have an opportunity to stand before you this afternoon and on this side of the podium. I wanted to share just a couple of things with you guys. For those of you who don't know me, my name's Windsor Andrews. I was born in a little town called Trucksnole, Louisiana, in Union Parish. I attended Southern University, A&amp;M University of Baton Rouge, Louisiana, which is the largest historically black university system in the world with five campuses. I had to throw that in. I saw Mr. Wayne with his grambling stuff. I'm an agriculture graduate in the field of animal science, so...
Mr. Andrews, would you step back a little bit?
I'll be glad to. Like I said, this is my first time on this side. All right, let's see if I can get it where I can read it. I received an agriculture degree in the field of animal science. My first full-time job was at a sawmill in South Arkansas with a BS degree. September one, nineteen sixty-nine, I went to work for Louisiana State University Agricultural Center located at Baton Rouge, Louisiana. My graduate school work was done in extension education with an emphasis in landscape architecture and horticulture. My various assignments included youth education with emphasis in leadership and citizenship. County agricultural agent for East Carroll, West Carroll, and finally, Cattle Parish here in the Shreveport area. Shortly after becoming Cattle Parish County Agent and Office Supervisor out here on East Seven Year Street, I was promoted to Area Specialist in Community Leadership and Economic Development for Northwest Louisiana. Sit in several meetings on discussions of I sixty-nine, I forty-nine, and a number of other thoroughfares that are now coming to fruition in Northwest Louisiana. After thirty-eight years and six months with Louisiana State University and the USDA, I became a retired professor. Two years later, I always say to the kids, two years later, I flunked retirement, but two years later, I came out of retirement, went to work for the Department of Public Safety for, by serving four years for the governor on his parole board. Truly inexperienced. Throughout my career, we have served on numerous boards throughout the city of, the city, the parish, the state, and the country, as was reflected in my resume submitted a few weeks ago. Aside from being a father of four and being married to the beautiful Ms. Vivian Andrews, who, by the way, has been featured in the Essence magazine for three different issues, makes me really proud. My greatest accomplishment has been to provide leadership in building a three-point-two-million-dollar worship center called the Pleasant Hill Baptist Church located at forty-six seventy Lakeshore Drive here in Shreveport, where the Dr. Henry L. Armington is the pastor. Once again, thank you for allowing me to serve the city of Shreveport. Thank you, sir.
Councilor Bradford.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Ms. Andrews, let's have a couple of questions for you, please. Ms. Andrews, thank you for agreeing to be, recommended to be appointed to the Metropolitan Planning Commission again. You read your resume, but I'm familiar with a lot of your work, as you know. But tell me, what, you know, we had a master plan committee meeting the other day in regards to the Metropolitan Planning Commission in the city, in the parish. What do you see our greatest potential?
In the master plan process?
Within the MPC relationship with these two bodies, with the body of the commission in the city.
I tell you what, I don't want to be too brutal and honest, but I've lost a lot of sleep serving in this capacity the last couple of terms, and it's all because my heart's in the city of Shreveport. I've had several opportunities to work in a number of other states and even a couple of foreign countries where I was asked to apply, but I really chose to stay here because I love the city. I love the work that I've done with the community. I've never used it to build a resume. The master plan program that we went through several years ago was an awesome undertaking. We had a number of people throughout the city, for those of you who sat through some of the meetings at the convention center, saw the master plan put into play and the design of it rolled forward. And ultimately, once we got that document to be in place, then we set out to put together the Unified Development Code as it stands today. I said then, and I'll say now, it's a document that's a work in progress. It's something that's not perfect, but yet there is some opportunities for everyone to, to play a part in helping to make it fit or suit your district wherever you might be. And we've tried really, really hard in our efforts to make it user-friendly, and at any point in time where you find that there's something that you feel like your constituents are not very comfortable with, we invite you to sit down with us, with our staff, and offer some input. I know that we extended some terms for those persons who had properties that were taken in a, in a different direction from what the program was designed for. They've had an opportunity to come in, and it takes us but a motion and a second to rectify that situation, just to mention one of the things. But I, I feel very strongly that the new coding system provides an opportunity for all of the districts to have some input, even the five-mile-out areas where we are, where our program extends, for an opportunity to help make Shreveport a better place to live.
And I appreciate that because sometimes lately, we've been hearing a lot of remarks regarding Shreveport in a doom and gloom light. You don't share that?
I do not. I do not. I'm doing my best to get my kids to stay here. There's a couple of them have strayed away, but I imagine the older I get, the more they want to get close to that inheritance. But having said that, I'm very excited about the future of Shreveport. Someone said there's no Superman coming, and I don't know if that's a proper term or not, but I feel like if we can all work together, we can make Shreveport a better place to live. This interstate commerce that passes through here and, and the future for I forty-nine and even I sixty-nine, which you and I may never see, but I know that it's going to happen because I've seen the drawings ten years ago that they're going to happen. We've just got to stay the course and work together to make this happen.
And my final remark, and I appreciate that as well. The Shreveport, and you've been a part of the apparatus that tried to give us some, some vision and directions in, in, in how we would proceed. But I have to remind people, and I hope you can agree, that the Shreveport of ten, twenty, thirty years ago is gone. I mean, the demographics... I mean, the demographics of Shreveport has changed. We know statistically, you know, that Shreveport, the majority of Shreveport is, is, is owned or below the poverty level, and that, things that you mentioned, for instance, the commerce, interstate opportunities with 49 and 69, is what I see as a boostful opportunity to, to move and to create economics, a new degree of economics in the city. But, but waiting and wondering, when is the Shreveport of the 80s and 90s is going to reappear, it's not going to reappear. The, the future of Shreveport is in the hands of this body, the mayor, Metropolitan Plan Commission, and I think, and I think like you, that we can work together, we can make this a brighter future for Shreveport. Send our hands now, let's do it.
I certainly agree with that. We all have to have some skin in the game in order to make it happen.
Ms. Andrews, thank you for your remarks.
Thank you, sir.
Councilman Green.
Thank you. Ms. Andrews, I'd just like to say congratulations, and, excuse me, I didn't plan to say anything, but I know Vivian is going to ask you, when you get back home, did I say anything? So tell her that I congratulated you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I do hope that everyone understands that there are nine seats on the MPC Board. There's four that relegate to the city council, there's four that pay attention to the parish commission, and then there's one seat in the middle that's a joint appointment, and that seat would be the one that I hold as I stand before you today. So thank you very much for your confidence.
Thank you, sir, for your willingness to serve, and, and I have to thank Ms. Andrews, too, for allowing you to serve, too. So just wanted to tell you that, make sure you tell I said that.
I'll be glad to.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. City Attorney, you have who here?
Yes, sir, I have Ms. Courtney Harris and Mr. Alonzo Jackson, Jr.
All right.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
All right. Ms. Courtney, would you tell us a little bit about yourself?
Yes, most certainly. I'm sorry, I am a resident of Shreveport, born and raised. I'm a graduate of the Southern University Law Center, class of 2016. At the Southern University Law Center, I participated in a number of events. Evening President of the SBA, as well as the Chairman for the Baristers Ball. I was also a joint degree graduate. I have an MPA and Masters of Public Administration received from the Nelson Mandela School of Public Policy. I was the only candidate in my graduating class to receive a joint JD and MPA, returning back to Shreveport, where I've been, just working here and just trying to navigate my way and be a part of the community and help the citizens.
All right. Anyone have any, have any questions or anything?
Ms. Harris, what work have you done since you graduated in 2016, ma'am?
Upon my return back to Shreveport, I was a judicial law clerk for Judge Ramona Emanuel and Judge Correa Stewart. After leaving the judicial law clerk position, I went to the public defender's office, and I also opened up a private practice, and I have been doing that successfully.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. Councilman Brown.
Mr. Chairman, I was looking at the, the job description or the assignments that the attorney, the city attorney was going to offer them, and I'm going to ask a question before, at the end, I'll let her give us a description of what they'll be doing in my office.
But you say you graduated in 2016 from Southern University Law Center?
That's correct.
And I apologize for that. So you haven't been in private practice?
No, I, I went into, I opened up my private practice at the same time I left the position of being judicial law clerk. At the time that you're a judicial law clerk, you're not allowed to practice law outside of the court.
Okay, all right. You feel comfortable coming within the city, city, city attorney's office?
Extremely comfortable.
Okay, all right. Well, she can tell us what you'll be doing, so we'll see how comfortable you are after that.
I'll sure be fine.
All right. Ms. Fulcher?
I'm good.
Okay. All right, Mr. Jackson.
Good afternoon. Alonzo Jackson, Jr. I, too, am a lifelong resident of Shreveport. I was born and raised here, matriculated through the Cattle Parish School Systems, went to Cattle Parish Magnet School, graduated from Huntington High School Law and Business Magnet. After then, I went to University of Louisiana Monroe. After that, I went to Southern University Law Center. That's where I graduated from law, law school. While there, I served as a 3L class president, and since then, I've been working at the Cattle Parish Public Defender's Office upon graduation, where I have a lot of courtroom experience with litigation, and also I have private practice as well simultaneously as my time being a contract attorney with the Cattle Parish Public Defender's Office.
Councilman Brown.
No, I just, I just, I just need to let you know for transparency, I've been knowing Alonzo Jackson since he was two years old.
Correct.
And I know he'll do a great job. His father, the late Alonzo Jackson, Senior, was a personal friend of mine who also served the city in various capacities, and he's following in his dad's footsteps.
Correct.
So at this time, if there's no question, Mr. Chairman, I'd like the city attorney to give us a description of what these two young people will be performing at the city.
Sure. Starting with Ms. Harris, I plan to have Ms. Harris delegated as the contract contact for the city attorney's office to handle all the yellow sheet contracts. Ms. Harris, she was being very modest, but she has a great attention to detail, and I think that, that, that quality of hers will serve as well in reviewing all the city contracts for consistency and making sure they're properly following the law. Also, she'll also assist us with, working with public records requests as a backup. As you guys know, Ms. Sharon Williams is primarily responsible for the public records requests. However, that task can be a bit daunting, and so she's going to help to fill in, to fill in some of those, those needs, as well as serving as a backup prosecutor at city court. There are currently three prosecutors on staff at city court, but life happens, and sometimes we need extra people to have a reprieve. She'll also help to support various commissions, the MPC and zoning commissions. She'll work with the community development department. She'll assist economic development, employee retirement system, and any other positions as necessary. As for Mr. Jackson, he will be responsible for fulfilling public records requests that pertain to the police department and the fire department. Those tasks can be a little bit different, and they require a different level of attention to detail, because you have to review NVS and, and various other audio from law enforcement. As you know, he just stated he was a litigator with the public defender's office, and so he's accustomed to reviewing those same documents and videos anyhow, anyway, so that should not be an issue. Also, he'll be directly supporting the police department and the fire department, and I will have him working on some in-house litigation, specifically subrogations, interventions, collections, things of that nature, to try to reduce some of the costs that we're expending with outside counsel. He'll also help to serve as a backup prosecutor, since he does have that experience, and he'll support, I believe, the SPAR Department Fair Share Program, the library, and the fire department retirement system, and any other needs that may come about.
Thank you very much.
Councilwoman Fulcher?
Thank you, Chair. This is kind of awesome. This make, this makes me excited, because quite often, at the same time, we're having people say that we want our kids to stay in Shreveport, we want to see more opportunities for young people to be involved, and to have, have skin in the game, and to show ownership and their willingness to lead and be a part of the city, and if some of the same people will be the first ones to say, well, they're too young. Well, I feel like you've done a good job of picking people whose resumes are appropriate to what you were going to be asking them to do, in particular with you having a master in public policy on top of your law degree. That's very exciting for me to hear, and thank you for both being willing to, to work in public, in, in the public process as servants, instead of going off to be in a private firm or what have you. I, I just appreciate it. Thank you so much. Congratulations.
For the record, I also have my master's in public administration.
So both of you are, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I graduated in 2014.
All right, Miraculpe. But it's, it's just good to see people that actually have a brain for policy and want to be a part of the process, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I think that's it, but I, I just, just add on to what Ms. Fulcher just said. I, I appreciate you all wanting to stay here and, and donate to your city, so thank you. All right, David?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. There are no items under consent agenda to be adopted, am I right?
I don't see any.
All right, so Ms. Jones, please proceed with regular agenda legislation.
Resolution 67, authorizing the mayor to enter into a donation agreement with Cattle Parish Fire District Number Three for 10 used Scott Safety Air Packs. Resolution 68, amending the fee schedule for the Emergency Medical Services Division of the Shreveport Fire Department. Resolution 69, declaring certain city of Shreveport, Louisiana supplies and materials and equipment, specifically vehicles, to be surplus and authorized with a purchasing agent or for a designated need to sell and dispose of said surplus property by public auction. Resolution 70, establishing a Citizens Bond Study Committee to study the needs and priorities of the city for capital improvement projects. Resolution 71, a resolution to thank Chief Patricia Dias for 37 years and nine months of service to the citizens of Shreveport as a member of the Shreveport Fire Department for her leadership in the department, or for being a role, a model for young people, especially women and African Americans. Resolution 72, a resolution to support a submission of bids to the Red River Waterway Commission for funding to renovate and improve Shreveport Downtown Airport.
Councilman Bush.
Resolution 68, in reference to the Emergency Medical Services fee schedule, I think there were some emails that were floating around amongst councilmen. I'd like for Chief Walbert to kind of come up and explain to everybody what's going on with this, and I, for one, believe it's probably way overdue that we, we look at this, and I appreciate him proposing it. Chief?
Sure, thank you. Basically, there are two pieces of legislation to the resolution. One is the treatment no transport charges. Those are, many times, we make a lot of calls where we don't transport the patient, or the patient refuses transport, but they do fall within a transport criteria. The ordinance way it's written right now does not allow us to bill for that transport. And I'll give you, I'll give you a couple of examples. We respond to a patient have a diabetic emergency. We arrive on scene, we start assessing that patient, start IV, start administering IV fluids, do glucose checks, things like that. Patient begins to come around, they refuse transport. We call the doctor, ask for permission to disconnect the IV, and because there's no transport, all of that equipment that was used, the response set, the cost of the response and everything, none of that can be billed. So that's, that is, for years, an expense to the city that's never been able to be recruited on those kinds of calls. The second part of the legislation is bringing us in line with the, what are the EMS transport rates in our region and in, in our local district. We're actually coming in line with what our sister city is charging for transports across the river, and this is just bringing us up to where we should normally be anyway on our billable transports. So that is the two pieces of legislation, and we have the comparison rates. I think I sent some of you some of those rates. I don't know if everyone's seen them, but I'll be glad to send those comparison rates to anyone who, who needs them, or you can pass them along.
I think that, that one thing that might be said, that as an example, chief, is, is a medical code that might be worked somewhere out in the field, and now, in the old days, once you started a medical code, you transported them, but now, the doctor can discontinue that at a nursing home facility or at a home. You can, you can accumulate a lot of cost in drugs and things like that. You push several rounds of drugs. So I'm glad to see us kind of coming along, from, from what I've read, study-wise, a lot of larger cities like Dallas have already started doing this, and I want to commend the mayor and the administration, because we, we task him with, with finding ways to, I don't necessarily call this a budget cut, however, it is something that has, has flown under the radar for quite some time, that, that is affecting our budget. So I appreciate y'all working with the mayor and, and presenting this to us. I think it's, it's long overdue.
Yes, sir, I appreciate the Public Safety Committee working with us along with also.
Thank you. Thank you, chief.
Councilman Brown.
Let the vice chief, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to speak on Resolution 72. Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Mr. Chairman, in consultation with Councilman Fuller, we're going to, we're going to ask that this be removed tomorrow. We, we spoke with the city attorney and our clerk, and the language that we was proposing, we didn't think was the language that we wanted to put in the resolution. The opportunity from the River Waterway Commission to help us with the downtown airport site is still on the table, but we want to be clear with the public, as well as with ourselves, the council, that we have appropriate language that will be very appealing to the commission, as well as to the condition that we'll be seeking these funds for. So we, we was working on it over the weekend, but we didn't get, we didn't get a document that we could present today, so we're going to, we're going to pull it, and then reintroduce it at our next workstation. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Ms. Jones, please proceed with introduction of resolutions.
Resolution 73, authorizing the submission of the 2019 to 2023 Consolidated Strategy Plan and the 2019 Annual Action Plan to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. Resolution 74 is authorizing the mayor to execute an acceptance of active donation between the city of Shreveport and the Shreveport Development Corporation herein after called owner and acting herein through Anthony J. Janica for the water and sanitaries, who remains and related facilities, to serve Margany Woods Unit Two and 12 Oaks.
All right. No discussion there. Ms. Jones, proceed with introduction of orders.
Order 72, amending the 2019 Capital Improvements Budget. Order 73 is amending the 2019 Capital Improvements Budget for Sportran. Order 74 is amending the 2000 budget funding contractual services provided by Sportran by Metro Management Associations.
All right, seeing no discussion there as well. Proceed with ordinance on second read and bottom passage, please.
Ordinance 58 is rescinding ordinances 33 of 2009, 54 of 2011, and 136 of 2013, and removing vehicular flow restrictions on Baker Street, Bannon Street, and North Street in Section 37. Order 65 is amending the 2019 Capital Improvements Budget. Order 66 is amending various articles and sections of the city of Shreveport, Louisiana Unified Development Code. Order 67 is to revise Chapter Two, Article Eight, Division Two of Section Two dash four twenty-one of the City of Shreveport, Louisiana Code of Ordinances relative to onsite certification visits for fair share program participants. Order 68 is amending Article Four of the Code of Ordinances concerning fireworks. Order 69 is amending Section 90 dash 306 of the Code of Ordinances relative to reserved parking spaces for the handicapped. Order 70 is amending Chapter 50 of the Code of Ordinances by repealing Section 50 dash 167 relative to wearing pants below the waist in public. Order 71 is amending and reenacting certain sections of Chapter 94 of the Code of Ordinances of city of Shreveport, Louisiana relative to utilities.
All right. I have Council Vice Chair Nicholson speaking on, would you be speaking about the handicap parking?
I'm going to ask the administration a question about Ordinance 67.
Okay. On the parking there, I just want to ask that real quick. Is that on the, that'll be going from, is it 275 to 500? Okay, I just wanted to make sure I have my numbers right. Okay.
And, and since the chairman has asked a question regarding that ordinance, I will again thank Cedric Murphy for calling to the council's attention and need to increase the fine for the abuse of handicap parking spaces. Some, some traffic infractions are easy to commit accidentally. We all go a little bit faster than we should sometimes on the highways, for example, but there really is no excuse for using a handicap parking space if you're not handicapped and you don't have authorization to do so. So I hope that this increase... So I hope that this increase in the fine for abusing handicap parking spaces will discourage that behavior. Concerning Ordinance 67, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to ask the administration to, let me first say that I understand that Section Two Four Two One of the Code of Ordinances requires onsite visits to ensure that companies, businesses applying for participation in the Fair Share Program are in fact eligible. The existing ordinance already allows the city to dispense with this onsite visit if another agency provides an appropriate certification, or if the city has previously conducted an onsite visit and is renewing the business's fair share eligibility. As I appreciate Ordinance 67, it would take away the requirement of a mandatory visit to certify a fair share business. It's not clear to me why that's a good idea, but I welcome the administration's input. Ms. Jones or Mayor Perkins?
Sure, and Quinn, who is our Director of Fair Share, I'll have him to come up to provide details, but this is to get us in line with the administrative practice that onsite visits have not always been done.
Well, I appreciate that, Ms. Jones. I did notice in the fact sheet for this ordinance that there was reference to administrative practices that are not in line with the ordinance's requirements, which I understand to mean that despite the fact that we have an ordinance on the books requiring onsite visits, those are not happening in connection with fair share certifications, is that right?
And, well, with this new administration, our fair share coordinator has been looking at this ordinance and the fair share rules very closely, and of course, we'll be coming back to you all with a larger kind of review to make sure that the ordinance is in line with, you know, the current administration's calls. But do you have any, is there, I don't know if Quinn has anything in particular that he wants to add?
I just, I would like to hear an explanation for why it is to the city's benefit, or it will help us ensure that the fair share program achieves its purpose is to eliminate the requirement of an onsite visit. I just don't understand whether that's a good idea.
Sure, yeah, okay. We'll get something to you more specific so that you can have that information.
Okay, well, I would like it before we vote on the ordinance tomorrow.
Absolutely, yeah, definitely.
That's it.
Yeah, there's no response for now, that's it. Thank you.
Would you like to see Mr., will Mr. Eubanks be able to speak to him after the meeting then?
Well, I'm happy to hear from him now, if he's willing and has an answer to my question. And if he doesn't, then he can take time to develop one and provide it to me.
Yeah, he can get with you after the meeting, and if there's any follow-up, again, you know, we'll make sure that your questions are answered before you have to vote on tomorrow.
Okay, thank you so much.
Councilman Bradford.
Chairman, I want to speak on 67 as well, but before I do that, I want to ask the attorney a question regarding 70. And I know we've heard three meetings of commentary regarding 70. I'm considering, and I want the council to think about it as well, it is not to deter any other public commentary, but I was wondering what would the charter, not the charter, but the council rules say regarding, I mean, suspended the rules and voted on 70 early in the meeting so that the public would know our position on that ordinance prior to additional public commentary. That may satisfy some people, but I think that's something that I'm considering. Again, it's on the agenda, so it does not prevent anybody from speaking anyway.
See you.
I don't foresee any issue, I confirm with Mr. Thompson, but the council would have to vote on it, just like.
Just suspend the rules.
Just suspend the rules and have the appropriate quorum.
This is after the, everybody, public has been able to speak?
Yeah, after the public, you can't do it before.
Well, my intention was before.
After.
If it's on the agenda, I would think that state law would require us to allow them
to speak.
No, no, I'm not saying they go speak anyway. I mean, even on items that are already suspended and adopted, that's been the customary procedure.
So, let me make sure I understand the question correctly. The question is, can you suspend the rules on that particular item prior to hearing the public comment?
Yes.
I believe you can suspend the rules to hear it sooner than it appears on the agenda, but I don't believe you can do it prior to the public comments because it is an item on the agenda. Is that your appreciation?
Okay, all right. That's fine. Now, in regards to 67, that was an article in yesterday's paper, I don't know if you saw it. My struggle for the last eighteen years in this ordinance, the fair share ordinance has been on the books for nineteen years. In the paper yesterday, there was minority contractors, black contractors as well, who said that the fair share program is not working. The mayor has made great strides in the first six months of his administration to increase minority participation in city contract and procurements, but that's on just a couple of decisions, executive orders that he's made, but the problem is that the fair share ordinance and program has not yielded the type of results that it was intended when it was adopted eighteen years ago. Minority and black contractors are only receiving modest and poor procurements and contracts. I feel that, in speaking with the administration, that removing unnecessary obstacles and hoops would be beneficial to us increasing the opportunity, sending a message that we're not going to be investigating everything that's out there to be investigated because the results of the contract in which they incur would be proof enough. Either they can, either they have the equipment, they have the apparatus, they have the resources to do the job, that's what would make them accountable. That's what would make them accountable. We are at a point now within this city fair share program and how procurements and contracts are awarded, that a lot of minorities, and we met with a couple last week, they feel like it's not even worth it trying. It's not even, you know, they have become so disgruntled and so disappointed in the way they feel we can engage them in city contracts, that they feel like, what's the use in trying, because there's too many hoops to jump. I'm not saying a free lunch, I'm not saying that we should be looking at unqualified, incompetent people to do work, but I just think we need to remove obstacles that has hindered the progress in increasing the numbers in which we are dealing with. Four, five, six percent. It's not good enough. And then we're talking about the city, which would trickle into the city's economic mainstream, which is, which we have a seventeen billion dollar economy, Shreveport. But when you look at African-American businesses and construction companies and other opportunities that are afforded to citizens of Shreveport business-wise, there's only 1.2% of a seventeen billion dollar economy that's going toward that sector of the city. We will not, I keep saying, we will not become a viable city, a progressive city, a city that addresses all of its citizens. If we do not work over the next three years, gentlemen and ladies, to do everything we can to ensure that that 6% of this city who lives in poverty, who feel hopeless in regards to doing business within the city, within the city government as well as the city business networks, can't do business. You know, I mean, we have been blamed for a city that we did not create. Everything that we've been hearing on social media as well as our personal conversations is that the condition of the city is just dire, it's just gloom and doom. And you've only been on the council for six months, one oh six months. I've been on the council for four years and six months. The mayor's been mayor for six months, and yet, it appears that all the blame is being put on this body. And I'm just saying that we have a challenge. I can't tell you, but how many times I presented legislation, you know, my first four years of this council, that was defeated along racial lines. Legislation that I felt would have been beneficial to making opportunities better for African-American businesses and contractors. We can no longer keep our head in the sand and think that one sector of our city can make the city grow. We got to make some hard decisions in regards to not, while we can't, but we got to make decisions on how we can, how we can make things better, how we can be inclusive for all of our people. That's important, Mayor, that's important. And the state appears is ready to help us move forward in some areas, and I think we are going to have to make ourselves more anxious in moving forward within ourselves. So the ordinance wasn't intended to do anything other than to remove obstacles and to remove barriers that hinder some opportunities for people that they say, listen, the proof is going to be in the contract and how they can do the job at the end of the day, the job that they're contracting will be done, and we don't have to inspect, do they have enough lawn mowers to do that? Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Okay, Councilman Bradford, I got Councilman Butcher up, but I want to ask the administration real quickly that if it's okay, I would like to call Mr. Eubanks up later on so he can answer a question or two from Councilman Nicholson, if that's okay?
I might have questions for him, too, so I'll owe you.
Okay.
Councilman Butcher. Okay, I'm going to speak on ordinance number 66. Myself and the clerk, Mr. Thompson, and Brandon Fell, and Mr. Clark, all had a very productive meeting the other day in reference to the food truck ordinance portion of this. I'm going to let the clerk kind of explain what I think, and I think Reverend Green has some legislation.
What he, I gave him mine, so whatever he explained, I'm with you.
So I'm going to let, I'm going to let Mr. Thompson kind of explain.
The objection, as I understand it, from Mr. Fell was to the food truck and trailer vendor section of this, of Ordinance 66. And one of the things that he objected to was having the food truck vendor providing the MPC with the location, where the, all of the locations where the food truck will operate. And so, we came up with an amendment to remove that section, that whole section concerning food trucks, from this ordinance and sending it back to the MPC with certain instructions. And one of those was to try to come up with an alternative to this part of the ordinance. As I understand it, Mr. Fell was, did not object to this and consents to the rest of the ordinance being adopted after this section has been removed by the amendment and sent back to the MPC.
So basically, we're removing that section where they have to report their locations to the Metropolitan Planning Commission, we're removing that in this amendment and sending that portion only back to the MPC.
Yes, it's everything in Section D, in Exhibit D. Everything in that section goes back to them. We couldn't do it piecemeal.
Right.
We couldn't pull out this or that. We had to send the whole thing back because of the way the UDC is constructed. The city council does not have the authority to really amend the ordinance. It can send the ordinance back, and because this was in several sections, it can send this section back to them and ask them to consider certain things, and that's what this does. And then we expect that it will come back to us and the council will have a chance to address it again at a later date.
The other portions of the ordinance, though, will be voted on tomorrow, correct?
They can be voted on tomorrow.
And I appreciate.
If this amendment is adopted, then it will be removed and the rest of the ordinance can be adopted with that amendment removing it, removing Section D.
And I appreciate the mayor's office and Ms. Krill looking into this for us. She's been very helpful with it. Mr. Clark, do you have anything you want to add about this?
It's been a great time for the PowerPoint. They put together a PowerPoint for us.
Oh, he does have a PowerPoint. Nobody has any objections, let's see it.
Mr. Butcher, that's what I was going to ask the council to do. We've done extensive research in food truck and food trailer operations and so forth, and we thought that you wanted additional information concerning, to assist you in reviewing this ordinance and even reviewing the ordinance amendment that is being proposed that might change your mind or might increase your knowledge, if you will, of the things that we've been doing. We've been working with food truck and food truck vendors for five to six years, and I even got additional information this morning from Chief Wolterson that they are required to go to each location where food trucks are located for fire code, fire code review to make sure that they're in compliance with the fire codes and so forth. So we just wanted to do a short presentation, if we may, to provide you with this information. It's strictly up to you.
So, Mr. Clark, this is new information, so each location, the fire.
And he's here, and he shared with me that he would be happy to come up and share that information with you also.
Chief, do you mind explaining that to us? And then, if nobody else has any objections, I'd like to see the PowerPoint.
And when the PowerPoint is done, I'm going to ask, and reach out to Adam Bailey to bring that information to you, he's done the research for me.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Chairman Bowman, would now be an okay time for me to say that Ms. Swain has coupons for ice cream, which is a food truck that's going to be outside at four thirty.
Awesome, good, chief.
Chief, have you checked that food truck outside?
It's an ice cream truck.
It's an ice cream truck. Have you checked it out?
And I'm more than happy to patronize them and take advantage of their business. From the last meeting, it kind of, some of the conversation stirred me because I knew that we'd had food truck vendors before that were inspected and especially around the, that was used out at the Mudbugs at the Hurst Coliseum. So I went and I asked our chief of fire prevention, what does the code actually say? The code has actually changed, and they are actually held almost to the same standard as a brick and mortar restaurant, as requirements for fire suppression systems, they can't be so, they have to be a certain distance away from any building. So, and my conversation with Mr. Clark this morning was, hey, I'm going to send you this, and I can send you all a copy also. You know, these are things that we're responsible for as a fire prevention bureau to ensure that they're operating in a safe manner as it relates to fire safety and those businesses that they set up around. So it was a concern for me to make sure that I did my research and checked, and it is coming out, there's a code coming out that will be enforced that applies to these food trucks.
So, Chief, you're saying that any building, so if they pull up out here in front of Government Plaza, they're supposed to have the fire marshal come? they're supposed to have the fire marshal come and-
No, I'm saying there's code that applies to them. They can't, they have to be so many feet from the building.
Okay.
They have to have certain fire suppression-
Mechanisms in place.
Mechanisms in place in their food truck.
So it's not like they have to call, you have to send an inspector out? It's just they have to follow those guidelines?
They actually, yes, yes.
Possibly by signature on the original publication?
What concerned me is if they're able to move around and there's no way of monitoring that, it would just be happenstance with an inspector out that's going to do their normal inspections. They, okay, I'm going to stop here and do a spot check. So that'd be kind of where that lands at. I just wanted the council to know that there are fire prevention codes that apply to these food trucks just the same as it is to restaurants. I want you to be aware of that, have that knowledge.
This is a state statute, correct?
This is NFPA Life Safety Code One.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman-
Which is adopted by this council.
Yeah.
Could I follow up on that? The way that it's written now, the proposed ordinance is that every time they move, they have to notify the MPC. If that ordinance goes into effect and you know where they're moving to, will you send an inspector out each time they move to view it?
No, sir, we wouldn't have to send one out each time they move. But based off all other businesses in the city, by ordinance, we're supposed to inspect each business annually.
You would inspect them and make sure that they knew what the regulations were and that they had the proper equipment?
And they're abiding by them.
And that they're abiding by them, but you wouldn't go out and make a site visit every time they moved?
No, sir.
Okay.
And the only reason there'd be a follow-up visit would be if that initial visit, there was, if they weren't in line, then there would be a follow-up thirty days later. Okay?
Okay, Chief, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Clark, if you're-
But like I say, if you're ready, we would like just to present some additional information to you. And like I said earlier, in the event that additional inspections would be necessary, we have the framework to do those additional inspections, and we would send inspectors out to advise fire prevention of any violations that may be occurring in the fire code. If you would, I'll ask you to listen to Mr. Bailey.
Thank you, council members. In an effort to address the various community concerns over the antiquated regulations guiding food truck operations, these proposed amendments have been prepared and recommended to replace the UDC's existing regulations. Current regulations do not adequately regulate the city's food truck vendors. Thus, the proposed amendments are based on contemporary industry standards and operations and is informed by rules and regulations used in other municipalities throughout the U.S. Picking up where Mayor Perkins last commented on this topic on May twenty-eighth, a review of ordinances from several municipalities revealed that the proposed ordinance contains accepted and appropriate provisions for adequately regulating food trucks in the city of Shreveport. Cities such as Austin, San Antonio, Dallas, Memphis, Little Rock, and even Tyler, Texas have common requirements that regulate food truck vendors. Some of those common regulations are health permit requirements, fire inspections, commissary requirements, rules for operating in the public right-of-way, hours of operation, distance to restaurants, as well as zoning requirements. For years, ambiguous zoning policies for food trucks have created a need for standardizing their operations. Since food truck regulations were first introduced to the city of Shreveport at around 2012, the Shreveport Police Department has issued zero citations for any type, whether it be a city violation or even an MPC violation. Two weeks ago, it was mentioned that these proposed amendments would create a black market for food truck vendors. Well, in actuality, a black market already exists. According to the city's Revenue Division, only seven food trucks are registered for the city for 2019. And if you do a simple Google search, you'll find that over thirty food trucks operate in some capacity within the city. So a black market already exists. With the passage of these proposed amendments regarding food trucks, the MPC feels that all aspects of the food truck industry operate will be significantly improved. Features of these food truck amendments include an update to the current code's ambiguous language, the need to modify key terms. It will address food safety issues. It will establish a proper permitting and licensing process. It will establish proper areas of operation and update the proper operational requirements based on contemporary industry standards and operations. The proposed amendments stipulate that food trucks must comply with the UDC's zoning rules with standardization in the form of operational requirements. These amendments provide uniform and definitive guidelines. Food truck vendors will have certainty for how and where their business operates through an annual license and temporary use permit. The temporary use permit will establish food truck vendors with legitimate and structured regulations necessary for proper and consistent operations. As these businesses, as has been stated time and time again, contribute to the local economy and become productive and innovative members of the Shreveport food industry, as well as to ensure that public self-infaith safety is a common concern. You have any questions?
Let me be clear, you said that on record, there's only seven food trucks that have been registered?
Correct, correct.
So how are we regulating this as of now?
They are not.
They're not being regulated?
They are not.
Just, this, oh, you stepped out.
Mr. Mayor?
Does the, is the, are the amendments that we're trying to put forth, the refinement of our rules right now, is there a plan to enforce after?
Well-
I'm trying to figure out this-
One of the best ways to, the MPC feels that they can do that is because currently right now, you're required to have a health code or health permit.
Mm-hmm.
And when you get your health permit, then you can go get your city license, food truck vendor license. We're asking that you get a temporary use permit, so therefore we can verify both of those. Because in order to get your temporary use permit, you have to have those too.
Yeah. I'm just wondering, because I've gone to city events where there is more than seven food trucks in the parking lot.
Well, they're exempt. It states in the ordinance that if it's a city event or on city property-
No, 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 not a city event. These, I've been to events within the city.
Oh.
In parking lots where there were more than seven food trucks in the parking lot.
Correct, that's what I'm saying, is that there are food trucks operating out there that aren't licensed.
Yes, no, we're on the same page there. My question is simply, if I can go into an event next weekend and see eight food trucks, like it seems that we have been doing zero enforcement of, like getting food trucks to simply register?
Yes.
So I'm trying to figure out, I mean, the conversation is no, right? If we don't actually have any kind of enforcement mechanisms, and we haven't been doing so since 2012. So I'm trying to figure out what are the enforcement mechanisms that we have in place?
Well, there, again, there isn't one, there aren't any. There's the land use side, and then there's the city regulation side. From, you know, Mr. Clark can address the ones from, for zoning violations, but from a city enforcement, there hasn't been.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chairman, if it's okay. In the meeting we had with Mr. Fell and Mr. Clark, we discussed possibly some type of fines, like if you get one warning if you're not registered properly, second warning, third warning. So I think that if we do some, if we send this back to the MPC, I think some verbiage will be put in there, or at least that's what I took from the meeting, that there will be a specific fine if you're caught violating this ordinance. So I think that's what we're working towards.
Okay, good, yeah, just some kind of accountability measure, because that's, yeah, that slide blows my mind.
Right now, what happens is it goes, they're issued a citation, it goes to city court, and there's no telling how long it'll take to get it on the docket if they-
We've given out zero citations.
Well, that's what the way, the way it's supposed to work, is it's supposed to go to city court, right?
Yeah, yeah.
But what, the way that, if we send it back in the section D, I think what the goal would be is to have a defined set of fines if you're not following the ordinance.
Mr. Chairman, if they get the special use permit, I think the MPC would be responsible for the violations and all of that.
Correct, well, and the temporary use permit would follow the property owner, not the food truck. Because the city regulation, the food truck vendor license would follow the food truck. So that type of violation would have to come through a citation to the city. If through a temporary use permit, if they were operating on a property and they were in violation, the violation wouldn't be through the food truck, the violation would be through the property owner.
Councilwoman Fulmer?
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Bailey? I appreciate that you've listed that there are several cities in our general area that are regulating their food trucks. But I think a lot of people don't understand why the land use department or the planning department, which covers land use, wants to regulate on top of the food safety regulations. So could you just speak to that and use your cheap words?
Do you want me to do that or Mr. Clark?
Either of you.
I think Mr. Clark would be more comfortable.
Okay, I appreciate it. I just think people need to understand why you feel like we need this extra layer.
As you're well aware, the MPC is in charge of land use regulations for the MPC limits. And we are the only body, only entity that's responsible for land use. And that's why when you remove our ability to regulate land use, you basically remove our authority that was granted to us by the legislature. The reason that we are so concerned is that every time something sets up a piece of land, it should be in compliance with those land district requirements. And what you've heard earlier in this process with food trucks is that they have not responded to those requirements, and we're only trying to work with them, educate through education and responsibility to set them in a position where they are legal and they're doing the things that are required by land use policy.
So some people would argue that just because you're adding an extra layer of bureaucracy in order to bring people in, so that some authority is on, is working with them, that you're just adding another hoop to jump through.
And that we really don't, and that's why we did all of this, all of the research that we did. We're not trying to be obstructionist by no stretch of the imagination. We're just trying to assist these entities in becoming legal, in becoming an operational in accordance with the laws that you have enacted as the city council here in the city of Shreveport.
I'm going to pull at you a little bit more. So can you give an example of, in one of the cities that you've researched, how their land use department is regulating compared to what we're trying to do?
And I've talked to Adam, one of the things I've done is, like you've alluded to, I've tried to let young people get involved in the overall operation. They do the research and report back to me. He has actually lived in Austin and could give you a much better example than I have.
I think that a visual example would be helpful to people.
Okay.
Or just like something we can see in our minds' eye. You know, can you tell us about, like, the research that you've done, how cities' land use departments, planning departments have been a part of their regulations?
A lot of the similar language that we're proposing right now came from Tyler.
Just give one example, like concrete.
Tyler, Texas.
Yeah, okay, so which piece of what we're doing is the same thing?
They're required to let their, if you want to operate food truck, you have to let them know wherever you go.
Every time you move.
Yes, and see, we're not, I mean, with this temporary use permit, you would apply for the temporary use permit. Let's say at the time that you apply, you know five places that you want to go. That, you put that on the permit. Well, two of those drop off because it's not successful, and you want to add five more. Then you just come add those five more, and then we review it internally so we can make sure that where you're wanting to go fits within the-
So you usually call and add that, but you don't get to automatically just go to there immediately?
Well, we would prefer that you called and added.
But you get to go ahead immediately to go to that spot?
Yes, for the most part.
Okay, is that what, I mean, Tyler's smaller than us, people might say they've got more people, they have more time on their hands.
Tyler wants you to have a temporary use permit for everywhere they go, not just one temporary.
A separate?
Correct.
Okay, so entirely, you have to have individual permits for each place you go?
Yes.
Temporary uses, and you're just saying add it all to one? What about like Austin or Portland?
I am a hundred percent not sure I can get that information and give it to you tomorrow if you'd like.
But are there any other cities other than Tyler you can think of that have a similar?
I want to, not off the top of my head, I have to.
All right, thank you, that's helpful. I appreciate it.
All right, Councilman Green?
Yes, sir. My question would be this, is say for an instance, you also there, how many food trucks operating now?
Legally or illegally?
Either way.
Let's say thirty.
So how many that's operating illegally?
Would be around twenty, twenty-five.
So how do y'all know that?
Well, I know that seven are operating legally, and I did a Google search today and wrote down the list of all the ones, like whether it be through Facebook, whether it be through Google, whether it be through an event, whether it be through, you know, something, and I wrote down thirty-two names.
So the ones that's illegal, have you all given them notification that these are the things that we need to?
We don't have the authority to do that to a food truck. The city would have to do that.
So have you all had a press conference to say, if you're going to operate a food truck, then there are guidelines that you need to do?
A press conference, no, sir.
Have we done any notification to ask to, okay, everybody in the city who has a food truck, then these are guidelines? Say for an instance, may I finish?
I hadn't said a word, sir.
Okay, well, you put your hands up, so.
That was just a gesture.
Yeah, I understand, I thought I was in church, but anyway. Say for an instance, if you, if I'm not here today, and I don't know about all of this, and say tomorrow I decide, I get this vision that I'm going to open up my food truck. So I just figured that since I can open my food truck, then I can just sell food. If I don't know that there's a law or there's a standard, so then I don't know. And then the next thing, what if, say for an instance, I got a license. But say Sunday morning, I'm over on Bethel Street, and then the person that operates the food truck get a call from me to come over to my church Sunday evening. Will you all be in your office on Sunday evening to answer the call? To say whether or not that person can notify you all that, well, the selling over here is slow, but this evening they having a big deal at the church on Bunkham Road, and I'm going to move over there. So who will be the person that they will call or who will be on call for them to notify you? Whether it's on Saturday, whether it's on Sunday, how will they know? Who will they call? And I know I threw a lot of stuff at you, maybe you can answer?
No, you ready for me to answer?
Yeah.
Okay. The first thing, once we get an ordinance enacted, then we can spread the information of the requirements of the ordinance. We don't have anything that we really have in place. We were advised at one point that chapter forty-two in the UDC were in conflict. So we have not put out any information until we can bring the provisions of those two sections of the ordinance together. Once we get that done, then we will, through all of the means that are available to us, get the information out that the city of Shreveport has a food truck, food trailer ordinance that's in place, and these are the requirements that are associated with that ordinance. In reference to your Sunday evening call, probably nobody, I'm almost certain that nobody would be in the office to call, but on, as with most things, in the event that someone wants to move, they could notify us first thing Monday morning, if you allow that process to remain in the ordinance.
Okay, so you say you all don't have any information, I don't know if you know about this, I just got this, and it has all of the guidelines on it, so can we?
These are proposed guidelines.
Yes, so can, so as we propose, do you think we can kind of put this out to the general public to say, this is what we're proposing? Like, for an instance, we got legislation up now that says about sagging pants. Before we do whatever, because me, I'm satisfied with the whole deal except for, I got to call you when I move my truck, because like I say, if I move, if I got to call, if I don't have to call you until Monday- to call you until Monday, then why not just wait until Friday, wait until next week? But just like we have this, I think this ought to be given to the general public, the folk that are concerned about a food truck, to say, these are some things that we are proposing to do. Let them have some input. Let them say, well, this will be bad on my business if I have to do this. And then once we talk to those people, then we can come up with something that we can live with, they can live with, and they can make some money and help the city to make some tax money so that we can get out of the jam that we're in. That would be my proposal. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So that was not a question. Would you like a response?
If it's to notify the people and bring them in.
And we conducted the MPC, as you well know, anytime that the MPC board is proposing legislation to the council, we conduct a public hearing, we go through notifications to let everyone know that these proposals are coming before the MPC. But if you're desiring us to go even further, we are more than willing to do whatever is necessary to get the word out. We just need to know what we are about to happen, or if you're gonna, whatever you do today, we will go forth from that point.
What I'm saying is, I'd just like to get the word out to these people that if you have not registered your truck, then you're operating illegally.
We can do that.
And then once they understand and know that, and then we say to them, this is how you'll have to operate, then we go from there. Here again, I'm just against the calling every time I move my truck.
And I understand that.
That's the only problem that I have.
We sort of support that, but we respect your...
Yes, sir, and I appreciate it. Other than that, I'm good with everything else, it's just a matter of notifying them that you're operating illegally, we need your tax money so we can get out of debt.
Mr. Chairman.
I don't think that would...
I just, we've said this before, but I wanna be sure that the council understands this. We cannot amend this ordinance the way we would amend a budget ordinance or other ordinances of the city. This UDC text amendment, the only way we can, the only thing you can do is, you can approve it, you can approve it with modifications, or you can deny it, the whole thing. But you can send it back to the MPC and ask them to reconsider it. So if you don't like any part of this ordinance, the only practical thing to do is to send it back to the MPC and ask them to reconsider it. So I just wanna be sure that council members understand that you can amend it the way we normally do.
Mr. Clark, if we send this back to you, would you all recapulate and help us out?
I think if you send it back, from what I'm hearing, Counselor McGree, in all due respect, that we would start over with the ordinance, but more importantly, we would start over with getting the word out to the general public.
Yes.
That's part of what we're trying to do with the MPC, with the neighborhood and community planning initiatives, better reach the different communities and neighborhoods around the city to advise them of these type things. And that's gonna be helpful to do one of the things that you were talking about, is making sure we solicit the input from the entire holistically populated city of Shreveport and not just a small segment of persons that are submitting comments.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Clark.
All right, Vice Chair Nicholson.
Mr. Clark, I just wanted to make sure that I understand the part of your presentation this afternoon indicating that we have more than 30 food trucks that are operating without being registered. Are these food trucks simply not registered with the city's revenue division, or are they not registered in any way and so they have had no health checks or other safety checks?
It is my understanding that they're not registered in any form or fashion, Counselor Nicholson, and that goes to one point that was made by Counselor McGree, that means that they're not paying any sales tax to the city of Shreveport. So they're not helping us get out of debt.
Right, so therefore, but if we notify them...
Right.
That you gotta be, because here again, they may just have a lack of knowledge, they just don't know, and if you don't know, they said, what you don't know won't hurt, what you don't know can kill you and cause you a fine.
Yes, sir.
So therefore, if we notify them that you need to be registered, and here again, like we got this beautiful copy today, just give it to, say, hey, y'all not registered, but this is what y'all need, and just notify them and let them know, and then we go from there.
Understood, sir.
And I will say that I'm, of course, concerned about any business not paying its taxes, but I'm more concerned about the idea of dozens of unregulated food trucks serving food to members of the public without going through appropriate safety checks. And I understand that the MPC does not have enforcement authority, but the administration certainly does, and so I would encourage the administration to have the appropriate person, get the list of unregulated food trucks, and take immediate action. And I don't, you know, if somebody attempts to comply with the law and misses a step, perhaps a series of escalating fines is appropriate, but if somebody is operating a food truck without attempting to do what they're supposed to do, in my view, that should be shut down immediately until they come into compliance. So I hope that's the direction we will take. Thank you.
Counselor McFleur.
I'm sorry. And Counselor Nicholson, that's the sentiment that we share, and that's why we are trying so hard to put the ordinance in place, get it adopted, so that we can work with the administration, work with the fire department, work with the police department, and have a bona fide legal ordinance that gives all of us the authority to do the things that are necessary, to make all food trucks in compliance.
Here's a question here, and what about them setting up on the vacant parking lots was a question?
We talked about this in our meeting, that another issue is not only are people without a license operating these trucks, but also that they could be doing it against the property owner. I think that Chairman Bowman mentioned the Rite Aid over there in his district, that they set up there quite frequently, and I've got an area in my district where they're setting up frequently, so I think that that also was an issue.
And as you well know, they set up on weekends at the Rite Aid on Pines Road and so forth, but if we pull an ordinance together, and it is an enforceable ordinance, we can work very closely with Shreveport Police to remedy some of those problems. But right now, we have nothing, so we don't call anybody, we don't include anybody in the enforcement process.
Okay. Counselor McRafferty.
Mr. Clark, give me your definition of a food truck.
It's a, a food truck is a van-like structure on four wheels that's moved by a motor from place to place in simplicity.
So trailer or?
Trailer is pulled by a motorized...
That's a food truck as well.
Yes.
What about, what about private property? And I know Rite Aid and other vacant structures, but like, and my question is derived from the mayor, 'cause we, I was at a big event this weekend, there was several trailers that was there on the fairground, for instance. Is that, would you regulate that property?
The fairgrounds, I mean, you know, part of the fairgrounds is operated, is owned by the fair commission and part is owned by the city of Shreveport. They would be exempt and all.
Yeah, I mean, I would think that, because, you know, when the fair comes, they're gonna have their own food trucks. And I'm gonna sort of concur that maybe you need to look at this again. In regards to liability, if somebody gets sick, Counselor Nicholson alluded to, was that, would any liability fall on the city? Eating out the back of the, one of these, one of these...
The cattle department of health is responsible for issuing the sanitary requirements for food preparation and so forth. That is again, the reason that we're working to pull together a comprehensive ordinance that would be inclusive of all of these persons, because you would not be able to get a temporary use permit if you did not have a cattle parish health permit. You would not be able to get a temporary use permit if you did not have an occupational license. You would not be able to get a use, temporary use permit if you were not registered with the cattle parish sales use tax office. That's the only reason that we are trying to enact a comprehensive food truck ordinance to ensure that all of these things are addressed. And they have been addressed in the past, I've been around for a little while, and at one point, the sales use tax commission pulled all of the different entities of parish and city government together, and we united in regulating itinerary vendors, making sure that they had all of the things that we're talking about, and it worked.
Now, I applaud the efforts, and I think we gotta get a handle on it, because as I appreciated a little period, that the increase in food trucks and those type of vendors are increasing all the time, all over. So I think there's a lot of areas that we hadn't even considered that need to be put into the equation when we start to talk about regulating these vehicles and these establishments.
And whatever you do today, we will go back and do everything that's necessary in order to get this back to you to be enacted into law.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, Counselor McFleur.
Counselor McRafferty, those hot tamale's sold out of the back end of the trunk of a car, is that, did he say that was a food vendor?
He said it was on four wheels. I guess so.
I said a truck, though, I didn't say on the trunk of your car.
Could we think about, 'cause some of the best brisket barbecue's been up on David and Ray's, I'd hate to think that they were illegal, but if they had some kind of sticker, you know, that would identify that they had complied, would be a good thought when we go to talk.
Yeah, I would think the same thing, like for instance, your inspection sticker, if a sticker was on the, on the, on the, on the truck or the vehicle identifying them as legitimate.
That's your temporary use permit.
That's what that would be.
And I guess we just have to decide, it gets back to Counselor McGree's problem, temporary use permits generally could be considered as site-specific, and if they don't have to register every time they move to a different site, then that would not be a site-specific temporary use permit. But as I said, we will look in depth.
Could you come up with a use permit that's not temporary?
I don't think you would want to make a mobile unit a permanent use, because they move around.
Mobile use permit?
A mobile use is a temporary use because mobiles generally move around. And as I said, we, if you're not comfortable with this, we're in the business of providing recommendations that benefit the entire city, and we will do the necessary research and whatever is required to bring something before the MPC board and the city council that's adoptable.
Okay. Is that Counselor McFleur?
Yes, sir.
All right, Counselor McGree.
Yes, sir. Mr. Clark, I have got my question, but when you called my name, I thought about it again. You know, my youth is getting ready to go to Galveston on a trip, and they gonna be doing plate lunches, and I'm gonna be hauling them in my truck, and I'm a law abiding citizen, I don't, would that be breaking the rule if I put all them plates and deliver them in my truck?
I think once you leave the city limits of Shreveport, we have no jurisdiction or authority.
No, I'm gonna be in the city, I'm gonna be in the city. But I'm just asking, 'cause we do plate lunches at my, over at Mr. Chairman's church, they, Rick's, they don't do no plate lunches, but we do plate lunches, and I have to deliver them as fast as I, I don't wanna make the rule. So if you could just help us out with this?
I just don't wanna make every church at the city of Shreveport mad standing here, so...
All right. Thank you, Mr. Clark, I appreciate it. I thank you, Mr. Clark, I'm good.
You did all, Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Clark, that's it. I'll just check with Counselor McGree and see what they selling. Did we, I know where we're at now, but do we need to get Mr. Uvans to come up now, if that okay?
They gotta be helpful. Okay.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Counselor Nicholson.
Mr. Uvans, thank you for being here this afternoon. As I indicated to the administration previously, I understand that the Fair Share program currently requires an onsite certification interview before certifying that an applying business is eligible for participation in the Fair Share program, is that right?
Correct.
The fact sheet associated with this proposed ordinance indicates that perhaps that rule is not being followed in practice, is that also true?
I can't speak to if it's being followed or not, because that's prior to my taking this capacity, but the way I see it going forward, in 2019, you can have an effective business without requiring a site, so, I mean, essentially...
Firstly, I want to understand whether you as the, you're the director of Fair Share for the city?
Yes, sir.
Whether you are aware that the city is presently disregarding an existing ordinance in certifying Fair Share businesses?
I haven't certified anyone yet. I've been holding over certifications for this.
So there have been no certifications since you took over in your new position?
I can think of.
Do you know why the fact sheet accompanying the ordinance indicates that the ordinance has been disregarded in the past? And I'm specifically referencing the fact sheet's statement to the effect that the ordinance needs to be amended to omit the certification onsite visit requirement because we need to bring it into line with actual administrative practices?
No, sir.
And I mean, your answer may be that it happened during the prior administration, and that's fine, I just wanna understand.
It might have happened with the prior administration.
Did you draft the fact sheet?
Me and Karen Strahan.
Okay, why did the two of you put that in there?
Because as it says for the requirements, that they can, if they're recertified, if I can confirm that there were site visits, then I don't wanna assume that there were.
And then my, the second part of my inquiry relates to why this is a good idea, just in the time that we've been sitting here this afternoon, I have pulled up a copy of the state of Louisiana Department of Transportation Development's Uniform Certification Program for Disadvantaged Business Entities. This is the process that is followed for certifying disadvantaged business entities in hundreds of organizations throughout the state, well, excuse me, more than 100, may not be hundreds, including the downtown airport in Shreveport and our main airport and the city of Shreveport. So DOTD work to be certified as a disadvantaged business entity, according to the document that I'm looking at, an onsite visit is required. All principal owners of the applicant firm have to be interviewed, and onsite reviews have to be described in a summary report. I guess my concern is we wanna make sure that the Fair Share program is achieving its intended purpose of building minority capacity, and I am concerned about the idea of applicants not having to go through the process of an onsite visit to make sure that they are who they say they are, that the business is actually owned by qualified individual or individuals, and that they are actually gonna do the work. And I will share with you one specific of use of the Fair Share.
Wait, before you go, before you go forward, I don't mean to interrupt you, let me correct you.
Please.
You said the program's objective is to help build minority capacity. The program's objective is to help build small business capacity.
Okay, and I accept that correct.
And let me draw another distinction as well. DOTD is for larger firms, so the firm, the actual net value of firms, when we're looking at DOTD, or million dollar firms, when we're looking at the value of Fair Share certified businesses, the firm value is smaller along the lines of $750,000. If you just look at the net worth of businesses, then it's likely to have a negative... So, you know, it's, it's likely that if a business, a business is worth a million dollars, then they would, you know, effectively have a site visit. I mean, a, a home site.
We are awarding multimillion-dollar contracts to the Fair Share program, right? That does happen.
Uh, it, it's possible, but.
Does it not? I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to be corrected if I'm mistaken.
No, I mean, no, I mean, there is, what's come across my desk, the largest, I mean, 100% pure contract, I mean, there's subcontractors on a lot of bigger contracts, but there has been no 100% pure DBE contract that's been over like maybe $50,000 or something.
Yeah. We are awarding multimillion-dollar contracts to firms that are involved in the Fair Share program, or is that not true?
Yeah, that's, yeah, you can say that.
Okay. So, hey, the Fair Share program and, and the, the status it confers on disadvantaged businesses is, is a substantial benefit. I mean, that's, it, it is beneficial to an applicant to be certified and to be qualified as Fair Share eligible, right?
Exactly.
I mean, that helps you, that helps you get business with the city that you might not otherwise get, right?
Exactly.
Okay. So my concern is that eliminating the requirement of onsite visit is inconsistent with our collective goal of making sure that the program is benefiting the, the persons and the entities we intended to benefit. And now I want to share with you a specific abuse that was described to me during the course of my campaign. I was told that there have been occasions in the past, and I don't, I'm not aware that this has happened during the president administration, I'm not suggesting that it has, where a, a shell company would be qualified as a DBE, would be awarded a contract, would have no equipment and no employees and would do no work, and then would sub that contract out and take, say, 20% off the top. I don't have specific evidence of that happening, but that is the kind of abuse that I think onsite visits would help avoid, and so I, that is why I raised the question today. Thank you.
I mean, you raised legitimate issues, but realistically, onsite visits do, realistically, they, they do nothing but add, cause damage to smaller businesses. Let's say they pervert, it's a company that provides a service. What happens if it's a painting company, or it's a lawn service, or it's even a cleaning service? You don't need an effective, a site to run an effective company that provides those services. So as you repeated, I mean, as you stated earlier, it's, the objective of the program is to help small businesses. So do we want to add those extra restrictions and, and, and those extra restrictions and prevent individuals who provide those type of services? Because I could have a cleaning service work out of my home. I could also provide a painting service, or I could even have a, a truck hauling service, have one hauling truck. Do, do, does that require me to have a site visit? No, because I'm providing out services. So I think this actual requirement hurts more small businesses than it helps. And on top of that, just because we're modifying it, saying that mandatory site visits won't be required for everyone, doesn't mean that site visits won't be required. That's why in the revision, it's saying that site visits may, may be required. That way, we can address your issue as well as not call, have an adverse effect on other businesses.
Okay. Councilwoman Fuller?
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Ubanks, I appreciate that last statement you made, that while we're saying they won't be mandatory, they may still be a part of this. Because I'm curious about what records you used to make your assessment that this wasn't something that was being done prior to your taking the office. Like, are there, are there no, you were left no records of pre, the previous, of your predecessor doing site visits? Because I went to a few different presentations where one of the things that was brought up was that if your office is your house, I'm not worried about the rest of your house, you just make sure that your office is clean, because I'm coming to see where you're doing your work, because even if it's your house, that is your site.
I have some records, but again, I don't want to rely on my predecessor's work, because I can't verify whether that is in fact a site visit or whether that in fact was a picture of, I don't know what.
Well, I, well, that says a lot, because when we talk about records in the public, those are public records, and I should be able to do a PRR right now.
Right.
Pull anything that came up in the last several years, depending on the retention schedule.
And I agree, but again, if I, representing this administration, am held liable for it, and I want to be held liable and accountable for work that I've provided, that way I can stand behind it confidently.
Councilwoman Fuller, can I, can I interject really quick? I, I agree with you 100%, and that is actually a huge problem with the transitioning of government here. That was one of the reasons why, you know, we put in place transition teams. There is no forcing function whatsoever from the previous administration to give us any documentation.
That's the important part right there.
You can literally burn documents before the new administration walks in, and we can't do anything about it.
That's what I was wondering about. I appreciate that, Mayor. Because you're right, if you can't, if you don't have anything you can make that assessment from, then we're starting over from scratch. But can you just tell me why you feel more comfortable moving forward with a possible site visit rather than a consistent mandatory site visit? Is it just a matter of time constraints?
It would be a time constraint. On top of that, there are, there is no quantifiable, quantifiable figure when a, a entity comes and gets a packet or they download a packet. Small businesses already have enough hurdles, and realistically, we, we can't measure who's on the brink of quitting. If they've already been through enough hurdles, they had to pay Secretary of State to get their company's name, and they had to pay for occupation license, and then they get the packet already discouraged or may not, and read, okay, I have to have a mandatory site. There is no quantifiable number we have that exists to say how many said, took the packet, saw that they had to have a site and just threw it away.
All right. Tell me this, Mr. Ubanks, and I'm going to leave you alone so you can get to our ice cream, because that's important. I don't want these folks sitting there with their check and we didn't spend any money, right?
Right.
With their truck out there. Is there another failsafe within your policies that keeps us from dropping people through the cracks that might be in violation?
Absolutely. One, you know, there is a statement on the first, a sworn statement on the first page that you notarized and swear that everything in, that you state is true. So that alone gives us authority to actually penalize anyone who isn't being transparent. Second, you, you have to list, give a list of your work that you've completed, all those contacts, as well as list your equipment. From there, if, whether you're, if you're prime, obviously, when you, when you submit a proposal, you have to list all your equipment in there and work completed again. And if you're sub, when you're called to get a quote, they ask you what equipment you have there as well. So you get paid upon service being rendered. So if you can't complete the service, it, it serves no benefit because you're not going to get advanced payment anyway.
Okay. I'm appreciating everything you're saying. Thank you very much. Thanks for being patient with me about this, because I have, there's two issues for me. One is making sure that we do have the transparency and that we, but to the point of not just transparency for transparency's sake, but to be able to say, we are showing you where the quantifiables are toward getting more minority contracts that are valid using these programs, even though, yes, our part, that what your onus is, is to build small business capacity, quite a bit of that is for minorities, and we want to make sure that we're doing, we're doing right by that. The other part is, if we're going to talk about government overreach and cumbersome redundancies on something like a food truck, then we don't need to necessarily have redundancies here either. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Councilman Bush.
Just real quick, Ms. Ubanks, thanks for answering all these questions. It's been extremely helpful for me, at least. How many companies do, do we have right now on, on this list?
673.
So it would be very problematic for you to go back and verify that that data is actually correct.
Absolutely.
Um, the only thing that I disagree with just a little bit, and, and not with you by any means, is there are several different type of consulting firms and real estate firms, things like that, that do business out of their home, and I, I think that that could be, I, I don't ever want us to, to hold the hands of somebody back from being able to do business in a timely manner, but I, I would like to know that these people actually do have a, an office in place to eliminate the problems that we were hearing. I heard the same thing that Councilman Nicholson heard on the campaign trail, that there were shell companies that were set up. And for me, that, maybe that extra step, I, I don't know if we need to go back to 600 and some odd and do it, but maybe going forward, a site visit may not be a bad idea. So that's just, that's, that's my take on it. I just want to say that if you're doing business in the city of Shreveport, you can have a home office and still be a legitimate business.
Okay. All right. Councilman Green on this side of the subject?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Green?
We normally do this. How does Bojeh Hound layers? Well, maybe you can't ask. That's all, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Ubanks. You've been extremely helpful, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Thompson, do we have any table legislation to be removed?
Now that I know of, Mr. Chairman.
All right. No property standards appealed to be considered today? No, no other appeals, Mr. Thompson?
No, no other appeals.
All right. Are there any reports from officer boards or committees? All right, seeing none. Mr. Thompson, clerk report.
Uh, I didn't look. Not today, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right, well, I got Councilman Rafferty and then Councilman Bush.
I was going to, Council, anyway, Mr. Chairman, uh, administration, can you, can you give us some clarity on, on this water change policy that we keep hearing, or is, is, how, how is that, how is that being implemented?
Well, Councilman, I will pass it over to CIO to address this question, but let me assure you, the, you know, the, the word that we would stop granting extensions past June 1st or July 1st or whatever, complete miscommunication, that's not the case at all. You know, before we did it by, you know, case-by-case basis, and that policy will continue. It's been nothing that was written down that told us that, hey, you grant extensions, you know, in this case or this case, so we're just doing it case-by-case. So the change, the, the word on the street about never granting extensions is, that's not the case.
That's not accurate at all.
So I, I'll let the CIO talk in more detail, but I wanted to put that out first.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, that's correct. As the mayor mentioned, there's nothing in writing that provides for extensions, but is, it is a courtesy that the Water Department has been providing to citizens for the disconnect notices, and that will continue.
All right, good. I mean, I, I just want the public to be very enlightened on, on that situation, that they will have opportunities to make their case for extensions.
Yes, sir.
Now, Chief, Police Chief. I'm getting some calls, and I'm sure everybody, the other councils as well, with the spike in, spike in crime, especially violent crimes. Can you, can you, is there any proactive measures that you're taking to try to decrease this, this, this situation?
Certainly. Well, and, and a couple of things, if I may. We always have an increase in crime during the summer months.
Okay.
So we, we, you can certainly call it a spike, we have it every year. We are still below last year's violent crime numbers at this time, substantially so, 20, 25% below. Now, that doesn't mean all is well, you know, smooth, smooth sailing. We have several special operations been running. In addition to the supplemental patrol program, we have assigned those officers that work in schools, SRO dare programs are now working patrol at least two to three days of the week, in addition to other duties they have during the summer. We've got special operations running through the weekend, one on Saturday and one on Sunday to, to increase the proactive patrolling efforts, areas where we've had large numbers of people gather, for example, Ford Park. Last couple of weekends, we've had incidents out there, so we have officers being hired back to supplement our patrol numbers specific to those locations, and we're always open to if, if we need to increase those numbers or increase the number of operations. But we're, we're paying special attention to those increases in crime, especially violent crime this time of year.
And, and as well as those hotspots that you just mentioned?
Correct. Yes, sir.
So we got, we got an email regarding, regarding Ford Park. Are you looking at?
We, we're hiring back additional resources specifically for Ford Park. We, we run what is known as what we've always called the cruising operation now, historically over a decade that I can remember. On Sundays, starting around spring break, generally through early summer, you have a group of, of individuals, generally younger adults, older teenagers, that cruise around in their vehicles, play loud music, which in and of itself is, is fine, but unfortunately, it does lead to increased violence in some cases. You have fights, shootings, a lot of traffic complaints, et cetera. So we've always had a, a contingency of officers working overtime on Sunday evenings, focusing their efforts on what we call the cruisers. Ford Park, Greenwood, Jewella, Cloud Fent Parkway, the Raceway on Hearn, there's about six locations that we know that you move this large group. When I say a large group, several hundred vehicles, possibly up to 1,000 people, and they'll go from one particular area and kind of move somewhere else. And so we, we try to warn when possible ticket, if needed, impound cars that, that meet the requirements, no insurance, and multiple traffic violations, things like that. For whatever reason, this summer, that has mainly, we've mainly been having problems at Ford Park, and the other areas have not been so much of a concern. So we're going to take the officers that have been looking at all those locations and have them assigned basically to Ford Park until we can get some comments about it.
Okay. I appreciate that, and I trust that we'll see some, some, you know, response to, to your efforts. The incident that happened downtown Saturday night, I know you can't comment on a lot, but have that suspect been found?
At the, at the bar?
Yes.
No, sir. I was given a briefing shortly before coming here. They do have, the detective worked all night on it all day. They've got some, some good leads, but arrests have not been made.
Is there any preventive measures you can take in regards to a situation like that? I mean, there is downtown patrolling already, I'm sure.
There are downtown patrol, and this, this does not appear to be a case of, it was not, does not appear to be a random violence.
Okay.
So there was, there was an incident that, that possibly occurred that led to this violence. It wasn't, it wasn't someone just walked out of a bar and was shot.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Chief.
Thank you, Chief Ryan. Councilman Bush?
Just real quick, we, we talk a lot about water and sewage and, and the issues that we have in that department. I want to thank the mayor's office and Ms. Featherston for, over the weekend, there was a large sewer main that, that ruptured behind a largely populated area in my district, and I think that, that there was a young man that found it because it was somewhat isolated from what I've been told, and I think that the mayor's office and Ms. Featherston and, and her crew and some contractors worked around the clock to get that taken care of. And I think sometimes we forget how much we're dependent upon departments like this in the city, but whenever you have an emergency like this, which really was an environmental emergency, and it happens all over the city, I, I just want to tell her thank you for, for getting this taken care of in a, in a quick manner, and, and hopefully with our agent infrastructure, this bond committee will be able to maybe take care of some of these issues, so.
Councilman Bush, let me respond to you really quick about the, and I'm glad you brought this up. We had a staff meeting this morning where Ms. Featherston brought up the fact that we are spending a significant amount of money this year because of the weather. Was the, Barbara, can you come up for a moment? What was the figure? Was it 200 million we're expected to spend, unexpected, or 2 million, 3 million? I don't, I added way too many zeros. Sorry.
Not 200. It went 200.
A lot of numbers, yeah. A lot of, a lot of numbers.
A lot of money.
So before she gives that figure, though, what I want to, what I want to emphasize is this year, we got a year's worth of rain in about the first four months of this year. It's shifting our ground a lot, so pipes that are actually pretty new and in perfect shape are bursting because of the shifts in, in our, in our soil, and it's ballooning costs. What we're doing from the mayor's office, we've wrote, written notes to our legislators, encouraging them that we need state and federal assistance. If we get a letter from council at your next infrastructure committee meeting, you know, with y'all encouraging the same, I'm going to reach out to the cattle commission, but these are problems that cannot be financially handled at the municipal level, and we need as much help as we can get. So I'm glad you brought that up, but yeah, she, she can expound on it, but this is an issue that we need help with pretty quickly. But this is an issue that we need help with pretty quickly.
Um, we, you know, in the past six to eight months, um, again, some of it rain-related and some just aging infrastructure, just on emergency repairs, some of which will be brought before council for ratification, because they're not complete yet. Stoner is one, this Wallace force main is another, and a big hole line Kingston and Williamson Way, our 68th and Union pump station, you know, all of those are going to total 2 to 3 million dollars in just repairs that, you know, we had to get a contractor out within 30 minutes and start working. Um, we just, I'm just, this afternoon, we're starting to, we made the final repairs on that force main this morning. Um, it took staff, I've had some staff that were out for more than 24 hours at a time, um, trying to make sure that that was done. We had other things because of the way sewer moves around the city. We had another break on another force main that we're actively working as well. And so, everything just sort of, you know, has been an issue. It's, it's getting worse. Um, the, the Stoner lift station where we have, we're bypassing, um, currently right now, um, because that pipe, which is in decent condition, just shifted because of being so close to a river that's out of its banks. Um, you know, we're experiencing a lot of that. The pipe, the force main that broke, the Wallace force main that broke, was in perfect condition. But it was situated nearby you where there was bank erosion. And so, you lost support from around that pipe, and so, under pressure, it moved, it shifted, and it caused that issue. And, and we're seeing more and more of that with these saturated soils around the city. Um, we have a lot of river sand that runs, you know, in the areas closer to the river, and it is causing a lot of issues. It's hard to, you know, I can't even fix the problem at Stoner Lift Station until the river gets down to at least 20 feet. So, I've got eight more feet to go, and it's not looking like that's going to happen anytime soon.
And Barbara, can you quickly talk about the financial structure of this? The 2 and 3 million dollars is all unexpected costs. And that's us actually planning for, uh, emergencies. So, it's going to go 2, 3 million beyond the current budget. So, we're, we're, we're taking from our capital budget, and I'm stealing your thunder.
We, um, because, because of the way we look, use, you know, revenue bonds, um, paying for that directly out of cash, out of our operating, will reduce what we can bond in the future. And so, we're taking that out of, um, capital that is being set aside for consent decree or water distribution projects. And so, it all takes a toll financially on us. Um, it, it's, it's just been, I, I've been with the city for 12 years now. And when I was with engineering and now with water and sewer, we've always had emerg, you know, things happen. But the magnitude and the frequency seem to be just getting a little bit worse.
All right. I erase Councilman Flurry, and then have Councilman Green. You're done?
Okay. Before you go.
Ms. Featherston, I'm sorry.
Yeah, before you go.
That Councilman Green is up now.
Yeah, yeah, Councilman is up.
For?
I wanted to know, Mr. Mayor, is there a way that your, uh, administration could reach out to this young man who, uh, discovered this problem? Because from my understanding this morning, had it not been for him, we would have much larger costs that we could honor him and do a resolution, because he has saved the city thousands of dollars, like you say, 200 million.
Yeah. Yeah, and he saved us, you know, some potential health, uh, health risks as well, so, yeah.
Is there a way we could reach out to him and give him a, a day?
Yeah, we can reach out.
Because I just think it's just that important.
Yeah, we can reach out to the constable.
They didn't give a name. They just, they just said a young man that was 12 that was fishing.
Yeah. We can reach out to the constable who reached out to us to get his contact information, Councilman, so we'll do that.
Yes, sir.
And, and Councilman Green, I appreciate that, because a lot of times, we don't know that we have an issue until someone reports it. And, please, you know, you guys do a great job of sending me stuff, you know, and if our citizens, we have an, we have a 24-hour dispatch line at 673-7600 that anyone can call anytime to report this, and it gets put into our system. And, you know, we're able to, you know, mobilize forces and get things checked out. And so, it's important, if you see it, report it. It, it really does help.
The way that I saw it was by a video that was posted by 12 Votes Home Launch Association, that the constable had actually been out there and, and was interviewing this, this young man. And, uh, I had no, so immediately, I emailed you, and within a matter of an hour, Mr. Riggs, the mayor, Ms. Jones, everybody had, was on top of it. So, I, I just want to reiterate to the public, call us. I mean, there's plenty of us, the mayor's office, the Department of Water and Sewage, me, email me, call me, because if, if we all mobilize together, we can get it done a lot quicker. Because I think on the video, it was, well, it's been going on for a couple of days, and we called, and there was a ticket or something, and, you know, immediately, we, we got it taken care of. So, I, I appreciate your work and the mayor's office' work on this. And, and I agree with, with, uh, with Councilman Green, we, we should recognize this, this young man.
All right. Councilman Bravley?
Yeah, especially, I, I got a text while I was here that there was a, is there a breach? Are you aware of a breach in the ma, main lines around South Lake Shore, Willow Point, Willow Ridge area?
Hmm, a breach, not that I'm aware.
That water is, water, water, water is off for, for?
I'm not, I'm not aware of it. I don't, I get, my staff, um, send out emails to myself, as well as the fire department, when it's an eight-inch main or larger, because we have fire hydrants. So, if it's not, I don't know that I've seen anything yet.
Well, check on it, because I got, I got a text that the water was off around Willow Ridge area.
Willow Ridge, okay. Yes, sir. I'll check on that, and I'll let you know.
Ms. Featherston, also, thank you so much. People on, uh, corner of Crosby and Mile Street, they really appreciate you all finding that leak and, and.
Sometimes it's, it's, people get a little frustrated, but again, with the weather, it's hard to find a leak when the ground is already wet and saturated and water is running off. And, and, and we, you know, we, we are able to, to catch a lot more during the summer when it's a little more obvious. Um, we don't want to just start digging things up and making things worse when there's really nothing there. And, and some, and, and there's a good portion of the city where we have a lot of natural springs, and, you know, we get those calls all the time.
Yes, ma'am. Well, Ms. Ruby Small and all the folk over there, so thank you very much.
Oh, you're welcome, sir.
Yes.
All right. Um, I think that's it. I just want to, uh, let everybody know that I, yeah, um, Mr. Mohammed earlier, I did speak to him and several others about, um, the public comment section. Uh, and I'm maybe asking a exsome already about, um, your feelings toward an amendment, um, to maybe adding more time to those who have a, a subject or an agenda item, more than one agenda item that they want to speak to. I think that after coming, you know, you may leave work early, um, trying to get downtown to find your parking spot, and you get in here, you're frustrated, and you got more than one thing you want to talk about or discuss, especially if it's an agenda item. Um, I just, I just want you to know, just consider that, I'm bringing that up for an amendment on tomorrow.
Mr. Chair.
Uh, Councilman Green?
Before we go, I'd like to wish, uh, Councilman Willie Bradford's wife happy birthday today.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Councilman.
Uh, Councilman Flurry is going to pay for the dinner wherever they go.
Well, thank you, Councilman Flurry.
Chairman. Chairman. Chairman?
I, we, it's several of us want to, uh, I think everybody's pushing the button to recognize, uh, my next old neighbor, uh, Mr. Jeff Epperson. So, we wanted to say hello to you, Mr. Jeff.
Hello.
Tell him how much you miss him.
That was almost, that, Jeff, that was almost a Price is Right moment.
Why not? Come on down. Why not? It's nice to have to be at this stand without anything important to say. I always say that. I have no pressure on if I do good or not. It's wonderful. Um, but I am, uh, uh, you know, glad to see y'all. I have been staying away, because I didn't want to be that guy that graduates high school and goes to all the football games, you know, like, let you guys get into it and get used to it. So, uh, but y'all, it's been really encouraging to hear y'all deliberating and talking about all of these issues. You know, even some of those things I remember working on, like the food trucks, you know? I mean, when we had to start working on that, we didn't know where to start, you know? And we got something, had to be modified a little later, getting modified again, you know? Practice makes perfect, and that's what the legislative process is about. It's great to see that happening. And, uh, want to, uh, thank my councilwoman, uh, Councilwoman Fuller, uh, for organizing this ice cream social today. So, we'll be out there, uh, helping everybody enjoy it. And, uh, you know, in the summertime, we may have some additional challenges, but we also have a lot of great things to enjoy in Shreveport, and it's a happy day. So, come join us for ice cream, and we'll get to say hello.
What was it, what was the timeframe?
Uh, just outside, uh, after the meeting.
Yeah, after the meeting. 4:30 to 6:30.
6:30, I think, maybe.
Oh, okay, we got to.
Yeah. Y'all hurry it up, and you're getting the ice cream. Thank y'all again for the chance to say hello, and it's great to see y'all.
We'll be asking you outside how, how you began to look so young after you left here too, so. Hello. I think that's, uh, I think that's it. Nobody else has anything else, and, uh, this means adjourned.